Thanks all in the meeting to order. Those in care to please stand for an opening prayer and the salute to the flag. Mr. Cameron, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all that's due for us. And Lord, we just pray for the city. Pray for our nation, Lord. Pray for our troops. And, uh, Lord, just pray, God, as you said, if any man lacks wisdom, to let him ask. And Lord, we just pray for your wisdom tonight, your direction, your favor upon this city. And, Lord, I just pray that you would be with us. And all we're saying do, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. No mayor's announcements tonight. No public hearing, correct. On the citizen participation, anyone here wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda, step forward, sign up, and give us your best three minutes, please. Anything not on the agenda. Seeing none, citizen participation closed. On the consent agenda, I need a motion to second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six zero. Changing things up a little bit, those at home and out in the audience, we're changing, uh, the pattern of our, uh, meetings now, so just stay with us, follow along on your seats out there. Uh, on to, um, board commission committee schedule. Board of adjustments, December 3rd. Capital improvements Committee, December 28th. Is that right, Gary?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. That's the 7th, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, the next Wednesday. What's next Wednesday?
It's the 7th, that is correct.
It is the 7th, okay. I'm sorry, Capital Improvements Committee is December 7th. City Council meeting, uh, will be December 12th. That will be the last meeting of the year. Planning and zoning commission on December 19th. On the old business and table items, I need a motion to second. I need a motion for the second reading of Bill Number 16-21.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending various sections of the city's personnel policy.
I need a motion to second for a final passage of Bill Number 16-21.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. Ms. Addington, welcome.
Hello, good evening. Um, as presented two weeks ago, asking for consideration and approval for the language change on these various portions of the personnel policy to ensure consistency and lessen liability. Any questions?
That's a quick overview. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Addington? On this res- on this bill? No questions? Nothing to ask Ms. Addington? You let her off easy, huh? All right. Uh, seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Motion carries, Bill passed at six zero. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 16-22.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a municipal and cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the Republic R3 School District for street improvements to the intersection of Republic Road, State Route M, and Rep. Mo Drive.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill Number 16-22.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. Welcome, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this, uh, cusher agreement partners up the City of Republic and the School District and MoDOT. Uh, the general, uh, cost, the financial responsibilities, MoDOT would pick up half the cost for the intersection improvements. The school and the city picks up the other half. Uh, the city would be responsible for about a hundred and fourteen thousand in, uh, cash payments and a little over seven hundred and seventy-two thousand in surface transportation highway funds. Uh, the school would bear an equal cost, uh, due to a, uh, potential donation of school property, uh, their share of approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand would amount of cash out of pocket and land value.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any questions for Mr. Brock?
Mr. Fair?
Yes, sir.
One update is to, we were talking about potentially tabling this until the next meeting, waiting for, because the audit would be done before the next. Did we prep enough cash in that change of the stormwater that would allow this a much more palatable project? That's one question. I apologize, I didn't ask in the last meeting, but I just thought.
I think we are very close. Uh, I mean, if there's additional cuts that are needed, there's really two identifiable sources. One would be, uh, a hundred thousand out of, uh, resurfacing for, uh, this project. At the council pleasure, I don't think a delay would make much of a difference, uh, if it's determined they want to move forward with this project or if it's determined that they need to make, uh, cut this project to, for budgeting purposes.
Okay, thank you, David. So the question I would have would be tabling the, until we know what, how much we're going to transfer. That was a discussion we had, if it's not ti- if it's not a time restriction or a time restraint, then we could wait to see how much it's going to take to reconcile the street account to the stormwater account to see actually how much of that balance is going to be in the street fund, fund balance. There's, there's?
There's not. I mean, there, the, uh, the other parties of the agreement are moving forward, we're meeting after the first of the month to start looking at potential consultants, but we're not under a strict deadline to have this authorized.
Sorry, Brenda. Councilman herself, you have something?
Uh, yeah, so, in that budget, um, did we, was it foreseen about the additional for Oakwood and Heinz?
Because of the financing structure there, our costs went up two hundred thousand, a little over two hundred thousand, but the loan proceeds went up by equivalent amount. So, as that project cost may fluctuate as we kind of focus in on details, um, it doesn't really have an overall impact to the project because of the way it's being financed.
Just, it's going to be more on the loan?
Correct. Correct. And there's, there's some latitude there with the loan structure, the number of years, uh, primarily. I think we're still, uh, working on what, what interest rate to expect.
To get your answer?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
So, I would ask the council's consideration, this is not saying, I want to be really, really clear for the community and everyone, this is not saying that we're against the project, it's saying we need to make sure that the finding of that audit of what's going to have to reconcile to the, to the street, that'll have to be transferred from the street before making that, before you, once you make this vote, it's, you're, you're, that's the last vote that's required, is that correct?
Correct.
And if it's not ti- if it's not a time restraint, then we're not up against a time restraint rather than, let's wait till the, the results come in of what we need to, how we need, how much is needed to reconcile that account? I would ask, I would, I would consider it to be tabled, but it's not because of consideration of the project as much as it is consideration of the findings of the audit or the out, or the review. You only be careful what they're calling it, it's a, it's a financial review of those two, two accounts.
And do you have a timeframe on that?
For the next meeting. I would just say we would, the second reading would be added to the December 12th meeting.
I had one question. Talking about time constraints, when is the last possible time that we can make a decision?
I, I think, not, I could present that and ask for a firm date, but I, I think the expectation would be by the end of the year.
Any other questions for Mr. Brock?
Again, just to clarify, if there's any change order on this particular project, e- even though we're sharing with the school, the change order would be on us.
Not necessarily a change order, sure, but if, if the cost exceeds, yes, if the cost exceeds our STP.
So if we have a two hundred thousand overage like we do in Oakwood and Heinz on this project, we are on the hook solely for that two hundred thousand.
That would be a correct statement, yes. It, it would come out of, out of eighty-twenty, our STP funds and, and our local cash.
Mr. Paul?
I have a motion to table.
I have a motion on the floor to table Bill Number 16-22 until December 12th, next council meeting. Okay. So I have that motion as on the table. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
We need to discuss it. Yep. I have a motion and a second to table Bill Number 16-22 until December 12th.
I have all in favor.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Six zero. Tabled to December 12th. Thank you. I need a motion to second for the second reading of Bill Number 16-23.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending certain sections of Chapter 205, 212, 340, 405, 410, 415, 420, 425, 435, 500, 510, 520, 605, 705, and 710 of the Republic City Code as a housekeeping matter with regard to a department name change from the Planning and Development Department to the named Community Development Department by amending those sections as set forth in Exhibit A.
Thank you, Brenda. I, I need a motion to second for the final passage of Bill Number 16-23.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion to second. Mr. Derrickson, you wrote this, I take it?
Yeah.
How could you tell?
What sentence?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, one breath. As it says, this is more or less a housekeeping matter, uh, brought about because of the, uh, name change from Planning and Development Department to Community Development Department. Something is, was spurred by that, but, uh, there, it, there's been a need to make some changes for several years because of changes in names to the departments. Uh, one or two of these sections are being clarified as to functions between Public Works Director and the Community Development Director, uh, but other than those couple of places, uh, it's just clarifying the name.
Thank you, Ms. Derrickson. And those, um, clarifications are on the, uh, second page of, uh, the exhibit, if you'd like to look over those. Any questions for Mr. Derrickson? No questions, no comments. Very good, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 16-24.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Chapter 215, Republic City Code Offensive, Article Four Offensive Concerning Public Peace, Section 215.300 Weapons Carrying Concealed Other Unlawful Use by amending Paragraph H, Subparagraph Three to extend the sunset date for hunting in certain agricultural areas of the city.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill Number 16-24.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. Mr. Derrickson?
As stated last time, this is something that's come up a couple of times before council since the consolidation with the former village of Brookswine. Part of the agreement with that village, uh, when the consolidation took place was that the city would amend its codes to allow hunting to continue as long it was, as it was reasonable to do so. And the way the, uh, this paragraph H was structured was to allow the hunting in agricultural areas and put some restrictions on, even in those agricultural areas, you couldn't be within so many feet of a residence or shoot over a residence. And so that's, uh, this would extend, uh, that, uh, agreement, uh, from December 31st this year to December 31st of, of 2018, which at, uh, that time, council could review it again to see how many change, how many or if any changes have been made to the agricultural zoning. Uh, you requested a map at the last meeting, we provided that. I don't think, Garrett, there's really any change, so to speak, to speak of since 2016. And if the light green areas would be the areas that are agricultural.
Thank you, Ms. Derrickson. Uh, we have not had any, I think we talked about this from last night, we have not had any issues or calls out in that area, is that correct, Garrett?
No calls.
No calls, nothing?
Not related to this particular topic.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Derrickson? Any questions or comments or concerns for Mr. Derrickson? Nothing. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschier?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I need a motion to second for the second reading of Bill Number 16-25.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plat of the Woodland Park Estates Phase III subdivision located along the 1400 block of South Illinois Avenue in the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion to second for final passage of Bill Number 16-25.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. Welcome, Mr. Tyson.
Thank you. Uh, this bill, if approved, will approve the final plat of the third and final phase of the Woodland Park Estates Residential Development. Uh, it will allow the plating of twenty-six, uh, single-family residential lots, all of which are located in the medium-density, single-family residential zoning district, which means they're all at least nine thousand square feet. Uh, at the last council meeting, it was asked whether, uh, there were any covenants and restrictions for this neighborhood, and I can verify this time that there are not.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Tyson. Any questions, concerns, or comments for Mr. Tyson on this particular bill? Quite a group tonight. Nothing for Mr. Tyson? Very good, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I need a motion to second for the second reading of Bill Number 16-26.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a traffic engineering assistance program agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion to second for the final passage of Bill Number 16-26.
Second.
I have that motion to second. Welcome, Mr. Brock.
Thank you. This bill is regarding a, uh, traffic engineering program distributed by the state of Missouri. Uh, we applied in August to, uh, conduct a traffic study and analysis at the corner of Heinz and Men's. We were selected. So, uh, the program would provide eight thousand dollars maximum, uh, to an estimated ten thousand dollar cost to have a, uh, traffic engineering firm come in, look at that intersection, uh, see if, uh, we are approaching the, uh, turning movements necessary for a traffic signal, uh, do some, uh, basic research into how that traffic signal might be tied into the state system, uh, but also look at some other opportunities to change the traffic patterns there. Uh, there'll be a brief examination of a roundabout in that, in that location, uh, verification of, uh, changing that from a two-way to a four-way stop. Uh, but I think the one that, uh, I think has the most promise would be to, uh, look at the potential for another, uh, egr- ingress and egress out of the area, particularly to the east. There's a detention area, uh, that might be suitable for, uh, reconstruction and, and that would likely provide a shorter route for a lot of folks that live, uh, on East Heinz. So, uh, this would, the program should move along pretty quickly if it's approved, uh, with, uh, the results back in the spring of next year.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any questions for David Brock? Is there a limit of roundabouts that you can have in any municipality? Any questions for, any pertinent questions for Mr. Brock?
We don't have one yet, do we?
We don't have one yet. There's a lot of talk. We do have one out there, we have, we do have one. That way out. No questions for Mr. Brock? Thank you, sir. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschier?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six zero. I'm gonna kind of go out of, out of sequence here, just add something to sequence. I would like to recognize, uh, our Green County Commissioner, Mr. Serton. Would you like to step up and say anything, sir, or are you just kind of do observe today?
I actually just came to observe. I occasionally make the rounds to the various, um, city councils, just to, I'm interested to see what you all are doing, and, uh, I know there's some fantastic things going on in Republic. And so I'm, I'm just here to, to observe.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
On to new business. I need a motion to second for the first reading of Bill Number 16-27.
Motion.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, appropriating from the revenue of the City of Republic, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the fiscal year 2017 budget of the City of Republic, Missouri, and providing for adjustments there too.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. O'Donnell, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and once again, everyone. This is a first reading as we present the fiscal year 2017 budget. But council has already had the opportunity through two different budget workshops, uh, as staff has presented the budget, and council has had opportunity to ask questions and also have general discussion about the various elements of the budget. Uh, also, the, uh, there has been a notice of a public hearing which, uh, which will take place at the next council meeting, December 12th. That notice was published in the November 25th edition of the Green County Commonwealth. And seeing as we've already had quite a bit of discussion on it, this is, this is merely the first reading, and I am done.
Very good, Mr. O'Donnell. Mr. Cameron, would you like to add anything to that?
Sure, I would, I'd like to express my appreciation to everybody that participated in, uh, putting the votes together. Uh, one thing that's, just I want to go through some things for the record, just because the audience that's, that's watching would not be privy to that information because it's not in front of them. So we'll, we'll go through this real quickly, because, because of the work sessions, they're not online yet, but, uh, the projection is to, one thing that you have in your budget this year that's different is, is the 2016 revised budget. And so, given the land, it was projected this year to be at a, at a ten thousand dollar surplus, but council approved the purchase of the property, and so there is a projected deficit in the general fund of about a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. That's understandable considering the fact the land was purchased, so it could have been much higher. For 2017, um, the projected surplus, we are, we are submitting a balanced budget, uh, with a surplus of two thousand thirteen dollars. And so, as also mentioned, at the next, um, budget meeting or the next council meeting, we will also have the instruments that were needed or required to demonstrate the administrative transfers, uh, correctly, and then also just to show how we're transferring funds from one account from the motor fuel and sales tax, things of that nature. But I do appreciate the, the two work sessions we've had, a lot of work that went into balancing this budget. Uh, so at that, I'll just entertain any questions, or if I can elaborate, or if there's anything else that the, the council would like for me to discuss or elaborate for, for the community, I will.
I would like to take this time to, again, thank, um, David Cameron and all the staff for, uh, the hard work on the budget. Uh, again, uh, we appreciate that, appreciate all you guys here for the city, appreciate the time you're putting into this. Any questions for Mr. O'Donnell or Mr. Cameron? Now we've had a chance to go through this, and we've sat through this, and council's had a chance to look at this, I, I encourage council to please, since this is the first reading, to please look over these budgets again, uh, go over them. If you do have any questions, please go to Mr. O'Donnell or Mr. Cameron. Any questions at all that we can come up with? Again, this is a first read. Um, so there's no further action by council? Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. On to other business. Resolution Number 16-R-89, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri regarding 2016 Christmas leave for city employees. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second. And this brings up Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, what up?
Oh, you can do that here, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can go up there, too. Start singing. This is a request, the employee handbook provides that if it's not covered on a Saturday, Christmas Eve, that it's not even included in the employee's benefit. This is one of the things I've asked Lisa to amend as she's working through the budget, is to just to delineate New Year's Eve as a day for the employees, and so I'm requesting that consideration on the Friday before Christmas, as that additional benefit be added to the employees for this year 2016. And then hopefully in the, in the, in the new employee handbook, that that would be something that is revised, that is identified. It's confusing, it talks about a half-day, and I think the city has historically worked on this, so I'd like to just make this request for the Friday and Saturday, um, for that Christmas holiday, for that to be an additional benefit to the employees. Appreciate your consideration.
And that is a, a full day on that Friday?
Full day.
Okay? And this is a consideration for 2016 only in lieu of the 2017 policy.
That's correct.
Okay? Any questions for Mr. Cameron?
That's a good idea. Can we, no, just simplify and say that Christmas Eve, a full day, doesn't matter what day it falls on? Because it, right here, it says, if Christmas falls on a Tuesday, Christmas Eve will be observed as a full day off. Falls on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then Christmas Eve afternoon will be observed as a paid holiday. Can we not just make it across the board?
It'll be much, it'll be much cleaner in the employee handbook than the, yeah, I, yes.
Okay, just one across the board.
Yeah, or, yes, it'll be much cleaner. We, yeah, this is, this is just gonna... You don't need to have a calculator to figure out this.
Any other questions for Mr. Cameron? And I do echo what Charlie Breschier said, that it is a good thing.
When this resolution is structured, you have three options there. You need a motion to pick one of those options, a second, a vote on the amendment, and then you consider the resolution.
Okay, so if you, these are three options there.
They're right here. Half-day on Friday, Friday or something else that council wants to do.
And on the explanation that David gave us, it was the full day for Friday.
Yep, that's what the Brooklyn...
And so you're needing, you would like to...
To actually have council choose that, yes.
So if council so desires, we'll need a motion to note that this will be a full day on Friday.
I make that motion.
I do have a motion, I need a second. Do you have a motion in second to insert a full day Friday before Christmas? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Now we're back to where we were. Needing, any other discussion on this? All in favor of the resolution with the amended motion?
That's correct.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, six to zero. Resolution number 16-R-90, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri approving a settlement agreement of a class action lawsuit with track phone and designating a portion of the settlement to the Missouri Municipal League. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
I have that motion in second. Mr. Derrick?
Yes, sir. Those of you who've been on council for a while will remember that we've had four or five of these settlements come before council where a class action lawsuits have been brought up to various cell phone carriers and through settlement negotiations in which the Missouri Municipal League has participated in representing the class, which would be all of the cities involved, have brought back to the various cities settlement proposals. This one's a little bit different than what we had in the past. In the past, we actually had to pass an ordinance and send documentation and send a signed agreement and all that. In this case, the proposed settlement is unless we opt out of the class, we're going to receive the settlement amount or an approximation of that 'cause it may have a few tweaks to it. As with all the other agreements, so part of the package in the settlement is that a city can designate a percent or a dollar amount to go to the Missouri Municipal League for representation of the cities in the class action lawsuit. And historically, what council has done, I believe, in most cases, has been a 5% designation to go back to the Missouri Municipal League to help offset their cost of representing the cities through the litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Derrickson. Any questions for Mr. Derrickson? Comments, any concerns?
And if we are going to recommend an amount, I need a motion to amend to plug that amount in.
Okay. So we will need a motion to provide the amount.
If council so desires.
I'll make that motion, 5%.
5%.
I have a motion for 5%. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion to amend carries. Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, six to zero. Resolution number 16-R-91, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri authorizing the adoption of the 2016 self-evaluation and transition plan to remove barriers to citizens with disabilities in city buildings, parks, and programs activities and services in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and ADA Amendments Act of 2008. I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
I have a motion in second and welcome, Mr. Cameron.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. In March of this year, the council asked the staff to begin a review of all city-sponsored and administered services, activities, and programs to see if any of those adversely affected those with disabilities that were using those services. And tonight, I'm happy to bring to you the culmination of many months' worth of work. The report that has been produced is a result of systematic review of those services and activities and programs, including all of the parks, facilities, buildings, and programs, paperwork, website is quite extensive. So much so that we have just about 140 pages. This report consists of two separate parts. The first is the self-evaluation, which describes how the review took place, the second part and the findings that were discovered. And then the second part lays out a 16-year timeline for the removal of those barriers that has some flexibility built into it but has been reviewed by staff as being fairly workable. What we discovered in producing estimates for the removal of those barriers is in today's dollars, a total of $658,145 to correct, approximately 160 or so different barrier categories that were found. Staff recommends the, staff recommends that this plan be adopted and passed tonight. And staff has already coincidentally begun working on many of these items because some of them actually were either at, bound to be no cost or a low cost to correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Any questions for Mr. Kendall?
I have a question. Like, given the situation that we are and our finances, like, obviously we don't have $657,000 to address. Any thoughts on...
Again, it'll be, given the condition of just, what we found in the budget, it is coming along things we're gonna have to have a work session over what our strategy is overall as to finding the cash and generating. We have to address those issues. As long as we have a timeline and we've identified when we're gonna get them done, I think it'd be, we need to identify what's immediate, what's long-term, what's something that as long as we're working towards it to get it addressed. We would need to set up a funding mechanism in place with our budget that would allocate a certain amount, that would demonstrate a good faith effort, not just, oh, we're putting $5,000 here, $5,000 there. So we need to discuss that as well. Part of what, some of the work that David was working on, I believe, on sidewalk improvements and different things are identified in that plan. So if you're looking at areas where we have to make cuts even in that department, so that may be addressing that. So we have to be very careful making cuts in those budgets and different things of that nature that it's not affecting the ADA plan. But overall, what is critical is to adopt it, two is to actually put into place a plan and to show that you're actually not just taking 30-year action plan to get that addressed. There's not 600...
Right, so do we table until we know the...
You need to adopt, you need an adopted plan, number one, for federal funding. So it's important that you have a transition plan adopted. That's the one place you can actually be fined for, for not having, like, I just wanted to make sure we're all in line. Without the transition plan, to identify that you identified it and then you have to work on what's our action plans for implementing it. So I think that comes into play when we're setting the budget, especially not only this year but the following years. But like Mr. Kendall said, they're already addressing and going after a number of those things that do not have high funding priorities. So it's demonstrating that to address that plan and the findings, it's critical. If we just sit there and say, ah, no one's, it's not a big deal, I don't think you can take that approach to it. I think as long as we designate that we're gonna do, here's our one-year, two-year, three-year, five-year plan to address how we're gonna get them done, I think that's critical. So I do think there'll have to be a meeting that we actually assess and address all of those from a funding perspective. Because this year with the balance of $2,000, it's gonna be difficult.
There are a number, as I've said, there are a number of issues that were discovered that absolutely required no money at all and staff had already begun to work on as fitting that into their regular schedule. So it does already, the city has already shown good faith effort in moving forward. But as Mr. Cameron stated, the plan would have to be adopted to be in compliance with ADA law.
I do wanna thank Mr. Kendall for all the hard work you put into this. I mean, this wasn't something you did overnight. There's a lot of hard work involved in that. And you've had positive feedback from the community?
Absolutely. Though we didn't have any written feedback, every bit of verbal feedback that I did have was positive. We did have an ADA review committee. Five citizens sat on that committee and every one of those went over the report thoroughly and had nothing but positive feedback.
And again, thank you for your hard work and your diligence and giving this to us. Anybody have any other questions? Yes, Mr. Council, welcome.
As a clarification, did I not understand that on that committee, there were several people with disabilities?
Absolutely. We have several people that are members of the disability community, that is correct.
I just wanted that to be heard.
Actually, they are a majority within that small group and the minority is actually one particular woman that lives on at the edge of town and she is a disability providing professional with OTC in Springfield. So she has a professional background.
Any other questions for Mr. Kendall? Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, six to zero. Resolution number 16-R-92, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri authorizing the execution of a state and municipal lease purchase agreement to finance the acquisition of two service trucks. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
I have a motion in second. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 22nd, council passed a resolution approving the purchase of these two service trucks, one for water and one for wastewater departments. Our budget execution calls for this purchase to be financed over a three-year period in equal annual payments and basing this on a delivery date we estimate to be sometime in December. We sent, we solicited sealed proposals from eight financial institutions in the city for three-year tax-exempt lease purchase fixed-rate proposals. And as you can see in the exhibits, five institutions responded and of those, the winning bid was US Bancorp with a fixed interest rate of 1.55%. See the annual payment there and that the total interest over the three-year life of the debt is $5,365. We respectfully request passage of this resolution so we can begin working with US Bancorp on execution of documents.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. How quick, if this passes, do you expect to have the financing secured?
Knowing US Bancorp, I would expect that we should have the financing secured within the next few weeks. It's just a matter of jumping through the hoops.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Donnell? Nothing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, six to zero. Resolution number 16-R-93, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri authorizing the renewal of the agreement with the Bank of Missouri to provide depository and banking services. I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
I have a motion in second. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. As council member, in 2014, after a request for proposals, the city changed its relationship for depository and banking services going from US Bank to the Bank of Missouri for an initial term that ran all the way through December 31st of this year. There is an option to renew for two more years, which will expire then on December 31st, 2018. The Bank of Missouri has given good service to the city and we have seen net earnings every month unlike the previous banking relationship and the exhibit goes into the details there. So very simply, as we review opportunities to improve our financial position, our relationship with the Bank of Missouri brings stability to the process. And staff recommends that the current agreement be renewed for two more years and then in mid-2018, the city will go back out requesting proposals from area financial institutions once again for depository and banking services.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions for Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
John question. I apologize, I haven't prepped in advance, but how we get the notice out to the different areas? Is it in the local paper? Is it on our website? I mean, how do we get information to all the banking institutions on, like even on our financing for the trucks previously so we know that we're getting for...
Traditionally, the city has gone out to those institutions that have a footprint here in the City of Republic. Therefore, those that have brick and mortar, if you will, such as Great Southern, Central Bank, Commerce Bank, Bank of Missouri, Mid-Missouri Bank, and so forth.
But do we post it on our website or...
I don't believe that has been done, but that practice can be changed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think I just make a comment just about this and anything else, 'cause we're looking at auditing services as well. And I think that's one thing that's important as we move forward, why, I'm not saying we don't use bricks and mortar here in Republic and shop local and that. I do think to get a farther reach, so we do need to look at how we're advertising bids to make sure we're getting just the most, you know. But everyone's having a chance to bid on the opportunity, 'cause a lot of people, sometimes you're like, I didn't even know you were bidding a project. I'm not saying that here, but that was a common theme in my history has been like, I was not even aware that we were bidding that service. So I was curious what our reach was and what our mechanism or medium we were using, if it was the Commonwealth to get that information out. Is it advertising the paper?
I don't believe it has been, so that's...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was, I'm trying to remember back then, but I can't. Can't remember my name half the time.
There you go.
So is this one of those situations that we should turn around and advertise this before we make a decision? Just to be sure?
I think when it's...
You have an option for two more years with...
I think you have, yeah, I think you have an option for when it does expire, I would exercise the option, but I think that there's an internal practice or there's an internal control process that needs to occur regarding advertising that would just say, make sure that your reach goes, that it goes to the whole region.
Right, but do we need to do that on this particular case?
That would be at your pleasure.
I mean, we only have, right now on this, there's only one bank that we're looking at on those. I understand where you're coming from.
But we opened this up, when we opened this up three years ago, it was two other area banks. This is just the renewal with the bank that we're currently with.
That's correct.
So we're not looking for another contract, we're just renewing this one. We had that option with the three-year. Is that helping you any?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? I don't wanna muddy it. What I, I use that point...
I get it, I get it as an option, like it's not the contract enough, but as the option, you can if you...
Yeah, and again, I apologize from what the subject matter, what we're voting on. My question would be, was just like when we go out to re-advertise, it's kind of addressing overall what our reach is, be it that we...
Yes, and let me also, if I may, especially for the newer members and for the city administrator, mention this. When there was a change in this office, the Finance Director, my understanding from the, from staff was that when we changed over to Bank of Missouri, it's not just a question of closing a couple of bank accounts in the old place and opening up some new ones. With today's electronic banking technology, it's a little more complex than that. And what I discovered when I came on board here... And what I discovered when I came on board here as interim finance director was that not all the Ts were crossed and Is were dotted, because we still had, even though we had ended the relationship with US Bank, there was still an operating account still open, and I asked staff at that time, why do we have two operating accounts open at the same time, meaning Bank of Missouri and US Bank? Well, apparently, the, uh, electronic payments were still going to US Bank, that had never been switched over, although, uh, staff was told that, and again, I mean, we're getting into stories here, but, uh, I'll, I'll just be honest with what I was told, uh, it was supposed to automatically turn over. Well, I talked to the US Bank representatives, and that never happened, so we had to spend months trying to go from one electronic banking system, which was US Bank's unique system, to try and do it over with Bank of Missouri and consolidate all our banking services together. That is a process I never want to go through again. Therefore, I am asking that, uh, for the time being, that we go ahead and simply renew, and that in, in two thousand eighteen, when it's time to go out and, uh, bid for banking services that we have, that we, uh, address all banking services, both electronic and manual, to be sure that we know what we're getting into, and that we have done our due diligence accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Can I ask your questions?
Sure.
With just a month left in this contract, I would say, how in the world you could ever get that changed, have one meeting left in the year.
And my apologies to the council, what I'm asking is a process improvement that we need as an organization from how we bid projects, just making sure that we're getting out through the paper, through our website, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we change this, but if there was an option, then when we, when we go to bid, we do those things, even if it's financing for the, the fire truck or David's, how we're going about doing that, and I didn't, I, I love the.
Well, as far as auditing purposes, that's, I just want to make sure that we're.
Oh, we, I assure you, we got.
And if this is one of those moments that we have to do that and need to do that.
Yep.
And I would like to challenge staff to come up with that procedure within this year for all processes like this.
We're working on them, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. O'Donnell or Mr. Cameron? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. On the financial report, welcome back, Mr. O, you didn't even get to sit down. Now, you said you don't want to go through that process again. Are you retiring before two thousand eighteen, that's just, I just want to know that.
We will keep the financial report brief. Simply, we'll, uh, let me just, uh, communicate to council, um, sales taxes for the month of October, um, the general sales tax, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, zero forty-six, rounded, which was eight and a half percent better than October of two thousand fifteen, and year-to-date, we are six point one percent ahead of two thousand fifteen. With respect to fire sales tax, nineteen thousand, seven thirty-eight, that's eight point six percent better than twenty, uh, October of fifteen, and we're nine and a half percent better for the year-to-date. Finally, on the fuel tax, thirty-three thousand, five twelve, that's seven point three percent better than October of fifteen, although year-to-date, once again, it's pretty flat, we are just, uh, eight tenths of one percent, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions for Mr. O'Donnell on the financial report? No questions? Keep spending your money in Republicans, all right? No questions for Mr. O'Donnell? I need a motion, second, for the approval of the financial report?
Motion, second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. On the reports from the staff, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, it's great to see you, I want to commend you, Garrett and I had the opportunity to see the, uh, state of the, state of the city, state of Green County at the, uh, Good Morning Springfield, you and your staff did an excellent job of presenting the state of the county, it was a great presentation, but it's good to see you here. So, uh, but, uh, the relationship, Mr. Mayor, what you're talking about, and I'll be brief, we're talking about the, uh, uh, processes, I think I mentioned it during the, uh, the budget was very revealing this year, even being a new administrator, just completing about my fifth month, you learn a lot, and I think one of the things that, uh, identified, and I even quoted it in the budget, is, is one of my favorite quotes from Abe Lincoln, if you give me, give me six hours to chop down a tree, I'll spend the first four hours sharpening the axe. And I think that, uh, as we move forward in two thousand seventeen, one of the things that, as a city, and writing a vision and writing the mission, we're redrafting, it's a new day, and we're going in a whole new direction, a whole new vibe, I mean, just because the budget looks the way it is, it just gives us an opportunity to rise above it, and I think that as long as we focus on relationships, processes, and trust, and I, and I've mentioned that before, and we'll sharpen those skills, and we'll, we'll work to hone those things collectively as a group, work together on our processes, how we bid things out, how we do our budgeting, how we communicate those things, that's just a small piece of what that is, but it's also rebuilding relationships, rebuilding trust about how we go about getting that done, and I think, I don't think, I know, as we look forward and as we build upon that platform, it gives our employees guidance as to where we're going and how we're gonna get there, it tells the region that this is, that we're gonna partner together with, as, as a region, not just as a community, but together and collectively, but also just, I mean, it's just, it's a new day, it's a, it's a new challenge, and it's a new opportunity, and so I look forward to having the work sessions with, with the council, with the staff, as to what the new mission, the vision, and our values are gonna be, because we are working on the draft, I'm hoping that we can unveil that in the next thirty days, I'm excited to unveil that, it's just, I'm not a marketing guru, but I'll tell you this, I'm excited to share that message, that it's not, you know, it's not, it's fight or flight, and I like to kind of, for us to, kind of aggressively, as we said it, to be aggressively progressive, and, uh, I think that's the direction that, I don't think, I know that's the direction we're gonna take, and so, I hope that you've seen through the budget and that the work that we're doing and the process that we're trying to improve, uh, the relationships we're working on, uh, the staff, that, uh, I'm looking forward to two thousand and seventeen, and so I want to thank the staff and council and everyone's input, uh, as we move forward. Uh, I want to welcome Cassandra Hinni, this is her first day, uh, we've hired a, a city planner, or filled the city planner position, she's not here tonight, so, everybody just went, you know, just took that chair, yeah, the guy waving with the badge, uh, but, uh, that's gonna be, that's, that's critical for the city, as we was talking about, you know, the idea of impact thieves, waving them to try to spur housing, to try to do different things to help move, uh, the economy along and things that we could help with the city. The planner is a key position, but Garrett and I just commend them on the work that they're doing, um, looking forward to continuing to work with them, I've lost my notes, I don't want to ramble, but I'm about done. I lost it. Sorry. Anyway, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, but I'm, that's about it, I'm, I've lost my notes.
I did not steal them.
You did take it.
They're not in my pile.
No, oh, one, one, I've got it, I got it, I'm, hey, you gotta be. Well, I think that's the criticals in these admin reports, please be sure you're, to, to review the admin reports that are going out, because there's a lot of information that will go out, but that's the best way you're gonna find out what's going on, there's some things that, that, uh, I don't want you to get phone calls where you might have code enforcement involved in issues, they're gonna go out, they're gonna be enforcing something, you're gonna get a phone call and say, I had no idea what it is, I want you to be aware that there's things that are in those reports that are very helpful and just, uh, encourage you, if you see something in there that, hey, I'd like to know what that's all, more about, but if you get a phone call about something, you're like, at least you know what it is, and so, if it's in that report, typically, that's what, that's the best that we can provide at that time, and if we know something else, we'll try to send it out to you in advance, but, again, I know there was something else, but I have to go, bring it up later. Thank you.
Very good, we appreciate your enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm.
And what you're bringing to the city. Mr. Derrick?
No, sir.
Oh, come on. On the future community events, Mr. Keeling, to the podium.
Thank you, sir. Uh, future community events are the remainder of November on into December, a busy week this week, um, first of all, we start that with the deadline for Republic Veterans Memorial Brick, that deadline is Wednesday, uh, this coming Friday, December second, uh, out of J.R. Martin Park, starting at seven o'clock is our annual reindeer run, five K, we anticipate around three hundred and fifty, four hundred runners out there for the evening run. This Saturday, December third, is Breakfast with Santa, that's at, at eight-thirty a.m., continuing to ten-thirty a.m., that's held at the Republic Activities Building. December fifth, twelfth, and the nineteenth, those are Mondays, we offer toddler open gym program, that's at nine a.m., that's for ages zero to five. December thirteenth, we're offering a senior citizen trip to the showboat Branson Bell. December thirteenth is the deadline for Republic candidate filing, uh, this will be voted on in April of two thousand seventeen, office seats to be voted on are mayor and then a member of each board of the city council. December twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, we offer our schools-out program, that's when Republic Schools is on Christmas break, that's from seven a.m. to six p.m. daily, and you can sign up for that at the Republic Community Center.
How did you score Santa, I mean?
That's a secret.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, won't say anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling.
You're welcome.
See you at the reindeer run. Um, that ends our regular session, I would like to, again, thank this certain for, for showing up, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, working partnership with Green County throughout two thousand seventeen, so looking forward to that partnership. Thank you for coming, welcome back anytime.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, we do have executive session, I need a motion, a second, to go into executive session.
Motion, second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call them. Oh, do I have to read that first? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So during executive session, no further action other than announcing an adjournment by the mayor, shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda, unless otherwise stated, on the agenda or is allowed for RSMO six one zero point zero two, and we are going into executive session under RSMO six one zero dash zero two one point one, and RSMO six one zero point zero two one point three. Do I need a motion, second, again?
You have to, just make a roll call.
Roll call them.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brashir?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, council. Thank you all for coming.